And today we've got a very valuable topic for conversation, reflective school board practice. We have three practitioners, if you will, and who have each served as local school board members and various other roles in public education. So we'll give them a minute, just a couple of minutes to introduce themselves. Some of you will hear me often say that boards need to model the type of behavior that they would expect to happen throughout the school system. Sometimes we're talking about board operating protocols in those conversations about how we talk with each other and include one another. Today, we've got an opportunity to think about something that has been widely promoted for teachers in recent decades and administrators, and I think is also very valuable for a school board and individual school board members. So this topic of reflective school board practice, like what does that mean for the board to be reflective on its work? And individually reflecting, okay, how did I contribute to this evening's meeting? Or how am I contributing overall to the work of the board? And what is the impact that I'm having? One of the things I'm aware of is sometimes we are not aware of our impact on other people. And I realize that that has a lot of implications for diversity, equity, and inclusion. It also just has implications for our own personal effectiveness. So are we saying things in a way and behaving in a way that is working well with other people? We'll say a little bit more about those things as we go along. I had an example recently, I just wanted to kind of lead off with and involves Brad, who's in the meeting here with us. But during the annual conference, I was part of a breakout session that we had two scenarios. And one of the scenarios was actually just sort of easy. The group that was looking at that scenario, they, they all came to the easy answer, if you will, right conclusions. Another scenario, however, was extremely difficult. And trying to debrief that with the participants, Brad was aware that my face was betraying the fact that I thought I had messed up. Like I, I thought I had made this scenario overly difficult, too complex, and without a clear resolution. Well, Brad, as a master educator, he gave me some feedback the next day and he said, "I could tell from your face, you were seeing and thinking one thing, but, but let me tell you, that was actually the good scenario." And so sometimes reflection has feedback from what we think of as a critical friend, someone who is critiquing us and giving us opportunity for improvement. Sometimes reflective practice is something we do by ourselves. But we have seen in teacher preparation that one of the most effective ways for teachers to learn and grow in their profession is to have a professional community. You might refer to them as a professional learning community, network, collaboration time. But I think, you know, some of the panelists can speak to that better than I can, so I'll, I'll shut up with that. However, the idea of reflection is really, it's just having some serious thought, some contemplation or considering, what, what did I just do? Did it get the results I wanted? How might I do that differently? And the word reflection and then reflective practice, you know, if you play a musical instrument, or if you were to play tennis, or any other kind of sport, the, the way to improve is by practicing. I recall a doctor's office visit several years ago, an elderly physician who I'd become friends with. I asked him when he was going to retire. And his response, as you could guess, was, "I'm going to keep practicing until I get it right." And we both had a little chuckle out of that. But practice again gives us the opportunity for improvement. And I'm gonna, I'm just go by the order that's on my screen. I see Brad and Erica and Kim. Brad, would you tell us a little bit about your background, your, your current role, and maybe some previous roles in public education?
I was a history and social studies and English teacher, high school for my entire career, same high school, same room. So I didn't travel that widely in that role. But I was somebody who was involved regionally and even sometimes nationally in certain efforts while I was doing that. I retired maybe 12 years ago, and then I joined the board at Grand Isle. I, it's a, there are two, I'm on two boards, a district board and also the supervisory board up here. And that's what I've been doing for the last few years.
Thanks, Brad. Erica?
Hi, I'm Erica McLaughlin, and I currently work for the Vermont Principals Association in supporting elementary principals in their professional learning. Prior to that, I was principal for 17 years in central Vermont. And I was a school board member also in the district where I lived on their, on their local board and their supervisory board. And I was a teacher prior to that in Bridgeport, Connecticut. So lots of years in education.
And Kim, not a stranger to many of people listening.
Hi, good morning or afternoon. I'm Kim Gleason, and I come to this type of work from almost 15 years in Essex and Essex-Westford on the school board there, often in leadership roles. I have the privilege also of serving on a few statewide boards and currently to include the State Board of Education. And currently living in Grand Isle. And I am really appreciative of this opportunity to reflect and think about this part of the work and responsibilities of boards through the lens of reflection. Thanks for including me.
Yeah, and just for all of us, this is a conversation together. So I have a few questions that I'll ask and I may make adjustments as we go. And I don't want any of the panelists to feel like they're obligated to answer every question. It's fine, just pass. And I'll, I'll ask the question of the group so that if one of you does, if you do have sort of a burning idea or thought or something someone else says, please share that with us. I wanted to start with having one or all of you describe an experience that you had as a teacher with reflecting on your practice and improving as an educator. If you can recall an example where you just, you thought deeply about what you were doing and made adjustments either in the moment or after the fact.
Well, I can start off with this. Ever, when I began, I think reflection either happens by yourself or collaboratively, you know, in those two arenas. And if, let's just talk me about if you're a reflective person in general. If, and I tend to think about, you know, worry about things and rehearse and driving home and how could I have done it better? And how, but my mom, stuff like that. It's hard to isolate that in, because you're constantly adjusting what you do. It's, it's sort of how you're hardwired. It's hard to isolate how that really changed my practice because my practice never, didn't involve that. It's just how it was. Before I was a teacher, I was a cook. I used to do the same thing when I was, you know, cooking a Mexican restaurant, I'd be doing the same thing. So, and then, and then you'd hear some people, colleagues, not many, but who would like say, "I can't wait for the day to be over because I don't think about school till I get here the next day." And I always was like, wow, not touching that. However, things changed when we started doing a really extensive in our school team teaching. So then, I, when you're on it with it, and we really did it seriously, and, and it was a lot of fun. And so we were always, I was always from right, not far from the beginning, had a team partner. And then you, you design curriculum together, you, you do all the stuff that you do with a partner, but you, that you might do by yourself, but you do it with somebody else. And there, things really changed. It was like, well, the experience we'd had at the, the conference is that you, you think something went well, somebody said, "I don't think it," you know, you're, you're constantly growing and, and up, and, and adjusting, and, and, and that really took it to a whole different direction. And what became clear, and we don't have to deal with this now.
Vermont School Boards.
During that, I think, maybe, am I not there anymore?
I see you, Brad.
There you are. Okay. Is, is that, you know, partners change. If, and we can talk about this at some other time perhaps, but if you have a growth mindset versus a fixed mindset, if you have a, you know, the, the Carol Dweck stuff, if you have a, a fixed mindset, that sort of collaborative reflection, that doesn't work out so well. We don't, we can talk about that later, maybe. If you have a growth mindset, it's incredibly productive because you're open to change and growing and thinking about what you, your practice in a different way. And so you would see when you kind of, behind the scenes, you pick your partners, you kind of try to angle to who you were going to be team teaching with. If you're, if something had to change, you'd really look for somebody who was like-minded that way. Because otherwise it was a drag.
That's a great point.
I don't mind jumping in.
Thanks.
So I appreciate actually the example, Brad, because when I was reflecting back to my teaching years, which was quite some time ago, I was recalling, it was in Connecticut when I was teaching, and it was a significant deal to become licensed. They had you videotape yourself and then you would have to observe and then do that reflection. And, and so from right out of the gate, that was sort of the expectation, right? And so in particular though, I, I recall, I was also a co-teacher, and so I had a partner. And so when you have that partner and you have the opportunity to observe each other and then have a reflective dialogue, it's very rich and can impact things very positively. And I think to your point, it's super important that you have an open mind to change and you, you have that growth mindset in order to make positive adjustments. But I also wanted to add that, you know, that would be when I would collaborate with my great team partner and/or the great team all at the whole school. And every day I would have to reflect because I would review my student data. And my student data was an opportunity for me to reflect on my practice and how the students are doing and how my practice is impacting their outcome. And so that is something that I've carried with me throughout all my different roles in education is having that data reflection as well.
I, I wonder how you might connect this to school board service because, you know, Brad, you started this out and Erica continued with the idea of a partner and team teaching. Do any of you have experiences you can recall as a board member where one of your fellow board members was really valuable to your considering of a situation or decision, somebody that you could think together with and anything you'd be comfortable sharing about that?
I, I can probably jump in and I don't think it's necessarily where it has been for me, any one example as much as a space to collaborate in designing agendas. So that was an effort of chair, vice chair, and clerk. You had a collective of, we did, the model we used allowed us to reflect on previous meetings and look at our work calendar and see, in addition to what was on the work calendar, what else was necessary to follow up from previous meeting or to look forward because it brought to our attention, feedback or otherwise was brought to our attention that had a place in our board work and benefited from space and time on an agenda. So that was work I appreciated in my times either in leading or co-leading boards that was not done in a vacuum, that was done collaboratively with at least one other person from the board and the superintendent and often the superintendent's one other person that allowed us to think, do our best thinking together about how to create a really intentional space in our agenda for thoughtful consideration, sort of setting the stage and the framework through the lens of what our responsibility as board members were, so that people were set up to be reflective in those agenda items in the right mindset of where our responsibility was. And I, I'm, I do yoga and practice yoga pretty regularly. I think it helps me to remember the value and importance of being present because I'm one that will also be running, doing the replay reel as I leave. But I do my very best to try and not have that be happening in the moment because then I find myself not fully present and listening for what's happening. That allows me then enough space from it to come back to it and think fully about it because I was really present for the time that I needed to be. But I had certainly had occasions where I've circled back after a meeting as a leader and, and acknowledged where it did not go as we had planned and I, I wanted to take responsibility and apologize for that publicly. I, I think that's important. What we model as our willingness to, to own and say out loud those occasions we would wish to be different gives people the courage to reflect themselves.
Kim, you make me think about that concept of failing forward and, you know, sort of transparently here or confession time. I, I had two situations this week already, and the week's not over, where I became aware in the moment that I had failed to clarify expectations. And I, I've learned in my work in board development that one of the most valuable gifts we can give to a board superintendent team is helping them clarify their expectations. But literally, I, I was in the middle of a three-hour workshop Monday night where a, a topic came up and a board member said, "Well, I thought that's what we were doing right now." And the topic was something that in my experience takes months and hours and hours and hours. And, and I, I realized that even though perhaps the board leadership and I were in sync on what our expectations were for that workshop, I had failed to use one of those basic, good instructional models of, you know, clarifying expectations. What are we, what are we going to accomplish tonight, right at the very beginning? And then ironically, the very next day in a room full of administrators, again, I, I stepped into a situation and I start having a conversation and where one, one speaks up and says, "What are we doing right now?" I mean, and, and essentially she kind of said, "Why are you here?" And it's like, okay, so now here I am, two days in a row with a situation that I, I need to learn from and clarify. You almost, you also made me think of a situation almost 20 years ago as a board chair where I had one of my fellow board members make an appointment with me. And he came to see me at work and he wanted to correct what he saw as some violation of our open meeting law. And he'd had extensive training in that topic from various boards and experiences and wanted to bring to my attention at the point where he felt like we had been crossing lines. And greatly appreciate his gift of feedback. I, I think, you know, that, that's important. Kim mentioned the idea of being fully present. Also having the right mindset to receive feedback and not sort of arrogant, "Well, who is that person to tell me, you know, blah, blah, blah?", right? That reminded of the Dr. Phil line, "How's that working for us?"
So Phil, one of your examples just reminded me of, I was on a board that was purely a policy governance board. And so it's, it's a governance model that I think is, is led with very strong intention, right? And so we proactively and explicitly state what our values are in an ends statement. And every meeting at the end, we have time and space where we reflect on our meeting. And I think that that governance model was very much in alignment with this whole idea of reflective practices. Like it's built into the system and in the process. And it's, you're always measuring and reflecting on sort of the big ideas of why do we serve, right? We serve what benefit? Well, every child, we serve for the, every child's benefit. And for, and at what cost, right? So we're always reflecting on, you know, how did we stay within our roles and responsibilities as a policy governance board members? And are we working to serve our members and at what cost?
That's really good. Erica also mentioned to me, she has a tool that Will shared as a resource in the follow-up email to this webinar as, as an example of how boards might self-reflect or reflect at the end of a meeting, how did this meeting? I've seen a lot of different boards, not only policy governance boards, do something similar where, and I think ideally the board members take turns, so it's not always the same person. It's not the chair that does it every week or month, excuse me. But the rotation of having different people ask some, some questions, you know, were all voices heard? Did we feel like we had the information we needed to have the conversations we had in the meeting? Those, those kinds of really valuable reflection as a group. That, what are some?
If it's, I'm sorry to interrupt. We did use a Google form, a meeting evaluation for board members. And both when Essex Town School District was a pure policy governance board or had evolved to it over my time there. And then with Essex-Westford where we certainly prided ourselves in being a good governance board, which is founded on a lot of the same tenants as policy governance, but had only towards the end of my tenure begun moving formally in that direction. But we used the same tool even through the years where we weren't a policy governance board as a meeting evaluation forum and as chair, I would send it out as a reminder to people right after the meeting. And it didn't get full participation, but it did get enough participation that if people felt concerned especially, I would have that feedback and it would help inform either the future agenda or just even bring to my attention something that, maybe if it required the person to pick up the phone and call me and tell me they, if it were a big deal, of course, I'm going to follow up with a phone call to them. But that was honestly a very helpful growth tool for me as a chair in my time. And it was like a three-question thing, and the questions were the same every time. And, and the comment section was always the most valuable. But it did remind us of our responsibilities too, because it was, were agenda items aligned with our responsibility? Like it, it's probably similar to Erica, maybe what you guys had used.
I think that this, this is helpful because coming from a, so the last maybe, I don't know, five, eight years that I taught, we were pretty engaged in professional learning communities, PLCs. And when, which is sort of a, a, a really hefty reflective mechanism. And so when we were getting toward the end of these questions, like how does a board do that, I was saying, oh my gosh. I mean, because our boards are volunteers and who, sometimes we are, you know, a little nervous about our quorum even in order to, because somebody's, you know, something's happened or you just not, didn't make it. And, and they are well-intended. And then I'm thinking, okay, if we're going to do something like a PLC sort of paradigm on top of this, that's never gonna, I mean, I've never, you know, it's never going to work for me. But it's, so it has to be simple. It has to be different from things like distinguishing between our intentions and our results, looking at data constantly and having the data inform how we reform our intentions. You know, sometimes we're lucky to bring goals forward on a regular basis, much less having a results-oriented, data-driven sort of, you know, behaviors at our board meeting. But that doesn't mean you can, you have to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that we still can involve, we still can do reflective practice. But not necessarily having people say like, can you, can you devote twice as much time to your board? You know what I mean? Because if you really, if you do professional learning communities, every month you're spending hours and hours and hours with that community, looking at your data. You know, that's, that's a lot to ask of volunteers. Seems to me.
Someone else, what, what are some of the other barriers to reflective practice? I mentioned the idea of arrogance earlier being a barrier.
I would say a lack of clarity around what your vision and mission is. If you don't know that, then it's hard to reflect on what, what your outcomes are, right? And so having clarity around what it is your vision and mission or your ends in the policy governance world are would be paramount.
And I think.
I think another barrier is trying to figure out how to work around people who have a fixed mindset versus a growth mindset. How do you, I mean, your board members are your board members. They, they were elected. And so there are, you, you must accommodate everybody. And that's, that takes a, for, for a board chair, that takes a certain amount of nimble, you know, leading.
Flexibility.
Yeah.
I think, I think being willing to be vulnerable is important and defensiveness is a terrible barrier to this work. And so I, I think in the question of modeling this for others, if we're expecting that of our educators, if we're expecting that of our children or our students, if we're expecting that of our administration, we should have the courage to do that on our own practice as board members. And I think having that be evident on how we are wanting to practice and improve our governance as board members, I think can build the courage to be vulnerable in every layer of the organization. The got-to mindset is like, for all the things we've done wrong, now this is the punishment. That really isn't the way any of us would approach the evaluation of a superintendent. Creating that as a development tool and our own reflection and about self-evaluation as a development tool or a chair's evaluation, which we did twice a year and with a superintendent evaluation twice a year. You know, one more dipstick and the other more detailed. Again, reminds people of what you should be expecting of your leaders. And then we can create space for them to learn and grow from that. And I think we, we need to demonstrate that willingness to be vulnerable, that how we behave, not defensively, so we can learn and grow together. And I think that that can go a long way for what people feel safe doing themselves. Seeing bad data is painful. Having the courage as a superintendent to bring challenging data because now it's been disaggregated or otherwise is the only way we grow. You can't fix it until we know.
I, I love that, Kim. I bet, that idea that if, that we can expect people to reflect outside of a, an atmosphere of trust is expecting that which never is going to happen, in my view. And so as, as just members of boards and board chairs perhaps in particular, that everything I think that we, that we do should be, at, at least in part, everything that we should, we do can, should be shot through with this idea that we're there as a group together in a trusting environment. Because everybody knows that one, as Kim just said, one gotcha sort of bomb coming your way makes everybody tighten up a little bit. And, and, and how to avoid that and how to just say, no, really. Here, we're to support each other and be honest with each other and we're together toward improvement. I, I've never taught a class where you couldn't get the class to grow unless they trusted you and trusted each other. I've never, I've never seen that happen in my experience.
So Brad, that's, it's a great point that, you know, kind of adding on to what Kim was saying. When trust is absent, what kind of board chair or individual members do to help rebuild? what kind of board chair or individual members do to help rebuild trust? And I I realize that that could be a day's long seminar, but in in a minute or two. What what are some things you have done or seen done that helped rebuild trust?
Give it a shot.
Yes.
Do you wanna?
Somebody take that, yeah, Erica.
I can uh I can give it a shot. I think that um discipline to policy, like good practice and consistency in doing that helps people understand there are ways to feel heard, even if you even if the board's actions don't um don't end up agreeing with what you've brought forth as your concern or plan. I think there's a responsibility to ensure people genuinely feel heard. Um there's an importance to being clear about the roles and responsibilities and the hats you wear at the different places you get caught um in conversation. So a grocery store conversation and having people understand what is and isn't board work and responsibilities doesn't mean they haven't had an opportunity to feel heard, but hopefully you've offered them the direction that their claim with their concern would most appropriately go. So that that requires discipline. We're, it's, we're a small, our state is a small town and we um wear a lot of hats, all of us at different times. And so I think clarity and discipline and consistency um can demonstrate over and over and over again, good intention towards good practice. And um and uh one of the things I would tell people and 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 I'm, I'm not even sure if I'm right on the target for the question you're asking, Phil, but I would remind people that, you know, you do want it to be about that, whether you're the parent or the teacher or the administrator, so that you can know predictably what the organization is expecting. I may personally agree with you, but if it's not spoken to in policy and it's not my responsibility as a board member to address it, then you don't want the next person sitting here who may vehemently disagree with you to have any more influence than I would have in the context of what's appropriate through policy, roles and responsibilities, and having there be consistency and discipline on those things. So that's, that I think is the best way. I think when it's been broken, it's a challenge and there's a lot of responsibility and personal outreach, I think um from board leadership to sometimes make those occasions and spaces for a coffee or a check-in. Um and um, you know, not, that's not outside of board meeting, parking lot talk. Um that's sort of genuine, you know, understanding things about the people you're serving with as people. Um and, you know, checking in if it feels like there may be things going on that are outside of this that would be important to know in helping support other board members.
I would add.
Kim, Erica, let me just mention, if if anyone has a question or a comment that you'd like to share, you can um enter that into the chat. If you just click on the little dropdown to send a question or comment to host and panelist, we'll be able to see that and and respond. Erica?
I would agree with Kim that it's through policy consistency and practice that that trust is built. And I also think that that reflective process at the end also breeds for trusting relationships as well. Um because it is an opportunity to discuss how as a board you kind of behaved through the policy and um it makes a difference, for sure. And the other question you had asked about um some obstacles, the one other piece I would add is making the time. If you don't make the time for it, then it's not going to happen. So I just wanted to make a note of when a board is committed to reflective practice, then you have to have the time and the systemic piece of that built in to your meetings.
Yeah, if it's a priority, then you make time for it, right? Um Erica has added something in the chat and uh will also include it as a resource to those who registered for the webinar. Um but I want to talk a little bit about components of reflective practice, like, okay, so what what are the steps? And for me, it feels a lot like a continuous improvement cycle. Um but any of you, you know, what would you see as kind of essential components if we're going to have a reflective practice? What what does that really look like?
Before we get into that, may I just circle back to the last thing? Um and and I almost hesitate to say this because it sounds like like mismanners or something, I don't know, something like that, but in in besides the clarity of purpose and stuff like that, which I think is, can segue over to the steps, is that when you're, you know, you're, it's in open meeting, it's being televised, you're with your colleagues and in your board meeting, I always think that it's important to keep in mind, and then here it goes, civility and kindness. And even when it's most difficult, when you're with a group of people and it's most difficult to be civil or kind because somebody has acting defensively or just s- said that you don't know what you, whatever, you know, something is difficult, that to re- to remember, to respond not like you were just, you know, shown, but with kindness goes a long way. It has for me anyway, in establishing, that's our more way, that's our, that's, that's how we behave here and that's how we get more done. I I am always shocked myself and I don't know why. I I feel like sometimes I'm I'm naive on this and I guess I am naive on this. Sometimes when somebody seems to think that they can at a meeting or in a class or anything, get up and just be terribly unkind or uncivil and think that that's going to like do something good. It's like, it never works, you know, it's always, it's always fat to the fire and but um so that's my mismanners.
I think that's right. I think that's right, Brad.
Phil, I just wanna, I'm noticing two hands raised and I'm not sure if there's um if people aren't able to drop anything into the chat. I see within my chat the options to message the host and panelists and I see you all, but I don't see a ma- a way for us to just double-check that attendees are able to get into our chat. And I don't know if that's a behind-the-curtain Carrie question or if those, I see two raised hands.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll, I've seen one, I'll let Carrie address that. How how can we maybe hear from people if they have a question or a comment they'd like to share?
Another four.
So, yes, yes, I see. I, we have two uh um, we have two in attendance and we have four questions in Q and A. Um and that was um in part of our instructions slide at the beginning that we have um that we ask people to um raise their hands when you get to questions and then we will either call on them um to ask the question. Um and uh we can do that now. Would you like to take questions now?
I missed that. I'm just seeing that they're saying it's disabled in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, right. They're supposed to raise their hands and then we call on them and they will. Okay, so would you like, would you like to take questions now?
Yeah, let's, let's do that. If somebody has a question, I'm seeing the comments too, like you said, in Q and A. And um it's just letting us know chats close, basically. Um and and sometimes participants will sort of hit the hand on accident. Um I know I've, I've done that.
Right, we, we generally don't have a lot to do in, with the chat because um we don't want to be two different conversations going on at once, so. Um so I'm gonna go ahead and allow um a board member to ask a question.
Sure.
All right. Here you go, Mr. Sumner. Mr. Sumner, I have asked you to unmute. Would you like to ask a question?
Oh, I really didn't have a question. I don't know how it came up. I have a question.
No problem. I will go ahead to the next person then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Mr. Cargill?
All right. Mr. Cargill, yes, here we are.
Oh, no, I just, I was, I I I was pointing out that we could use the Q and A to ask our questions when the, when everybody was so confused about who could do what. I'm just enjoying listening to people talk. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic.
My good friend Bill Edgerton has his hand up.
There he is. There you go, Mr. Edgerton.
There you go. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you for putting on this uh this webinar and uh we're all in. Our job is to grow and to learn and to share and believe. And these webinars help us move in that direction and be more effective in our lives as well as as board members. And I was curious, and I think it's tangent to what the topic is today is what are the characteristics you feel are critical for an having an effective board member? What traits, what skills, what understandings or passions do you think are make up the core of an effective school board member?
I I I think uh Brad and Kim just said they need to be nice. Uh and I I appreciate that, you know, but uh that's a great question, Bill. Uh because it does fit right in with reflective practice. I mean, we do this individually and we do it collectively. Um what what are some of, other than being nice and civil? What are, what are some other characteristics of effective school board members? You all three have been one.
I think when a school board member comes on, knew that they uh it sounds sort of obvious, but that they have the well-being of the students in the school uh in, as a whole in mind, not as a, sometimes people will come in as a single item. Uh they have a, they have everything you're passionate about. Uh and they come in with that and either they get, they attend to it and then it's either done or not done and they lose interest or it it just blows everybody else out of the water. So I think this thing about shared goals so that if a, if you have a strong set of goals that the board has and that if you come as a new board member and you share those goals and furthering those goals and you put aside your own self, you know, you have to put aside your own bias in order to put those ahead, that's a good quality. That's a quality I would look for.
That's great. Someone else?
Um, I have one more question here. Is that okay?
Well, um unless somebody else has some answer with Bill's question, just anything else about uh being an effective board member? No.
I I think I would add to all those important qualities, sort of the open mind, open heart and curious learner. Um a commitment to the mission and vision of your district. Um which should be inclusive of this notion of high-quality education for every student. Um and and that we, and and a development at least of an understanding. I don't think we come to it naturally when we walk into these spaces, but I think the willingness to learn and understand the roles and responsibilities because there's so much value in the diversity of the experiences we all have when we came to that table. And they certainly inform who we are in our decision-making at that table, but they aren't the hat we're wearing when we are at that table, doing our job, making those decisions. And that is a nuance that I think would be, is hard for people who've never done board work. And I think requires coaching and and sharing and learning together and understanding. So I think um people ready to do that kind of work will come and find and and sort of on the other side of things, people who have a single issue that is their passion will grow weary, I think, in a good governance board with discipline to good practice. Um it it is not very gratifying in that environment. And the discipline of the board to maintain itself in the face of that I think is the only way to move past that which the, which may be immovable or feel immovable.
Kim, speak, speaking at a conference recently with school board members, I said uh if you got elected on a single issue or a personal issue, get over it or move on. Like, because, you know, and I thought about that since, um, you know, what about somebody that got on a school board in the last year or two because they were against mask mandates? Like, oh, okay, now what? Like, you know, uh what, I I did want to fire a coach. I was a school board member and there's a coach I would have loved to have fired. And I realized real quickly, that wasn't my role. That wasn't what's best for kids. Like, that was my personal issue, not the school system's issue or need, y- you know, uh so how how do we like get over it and move on? Uh the, one other thing, Kim, you said you use the word curious learner and just coincidentally, this is the book I'm reading this week. It's just called Curious. Uh I I think part of that mindset that helps us not be about gotcha and asking closed-ended questions of why could you let that happen, right? That 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 mindset of an open heart and an open mind, um it comes when we're curious, like, yeah. Yeah, so uh before we move on, Carrie, what was the next question?
Well, um it's from Ms. Lori. Let me allow her to ask it.
Okay.
Lori, you're unmuted.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, um Phil, I, or Brad, I sat next to you at lunch at the annual conference. You look familiar, so anyway.
I grew up here since.
Yeah, yeah. So thanks so much for doing this. This is really awesome. Um I I wish I had had this, you know, seven years ago, when I first started, but I'm really, really appreciative of of you doing this. I I just wanted to add that one of the things that our board has done to uh help promote trust is uh institute at least an annual and and sometimes twice a year retreat uh for just board members and uh administration. And I mean, we can talk more candidly. I mean, of course, it's an open meeting, so anybody can come, but but the agenda is um broader and it it just, I felt like we went through some really difficult times when we uh suggested that we close a grade school and the community went a little nuts under statement there. And uh and and we really, uh it was hard on the board. It was super hard on the board and the retreat really helps. It really helped.
Boy, I'm glad you said that because I forgot, you know, we are in the islands. We have four, our superintendent has four boards, there's three districts, one of which used to be three dis- it's Byzantine at best. Um and uh and for the first time this past summer with Phil, we we'd have our board retreats, but they were not, they were just meetings and they, and I went to my first one and didn't seem like any retreat I'd ever been to. It was just I don't know, it seemed like a meeting. So I pushed and we got a, let's have it at a state park, let's just have it different. We had Phil come in and be a leader. And I have to say that, you know, during meetings when you're doing budgets and you're just the clock is running out and or over and it's late at night and and everybody's fried, that day on that board, that one board, we had more reflective practice happen than we'd had in the previous three years. It was, I I couldn't believe it. It was so valuable. Um uh and uh it was easy to do. You know, it didn't take a big, it wasn't a heavy lift to do. Phil did the heavy lifting.
Well, it it's interesting that that idea of making time for reflective practice and uh, you know, certainly every school board should at least annually set aside a time for a board retreat to reflect on the the last year and maybe set some new direction for the upcoming year. But doing it outside at a state park on a Saturday, uh it it puts you in a different space, right? You're not concerned about the physical needs in the building around you or, you know, your regular routine. I think that's really valuable.
Let's talk. I saw, I saw some of my board members for the first time there. Because part of the thing that doesn't work well towards collaborative reflection is their hybrid meetings and some people always uh zoom in and it's just harder to have that, but not at that state park. I mean, there were two people I'd seen for the first time at that meeting, I mean, seen in person. Yeah, actually seen at all.
Well, let's move it forward. So uh when the next 10 minutes um or nine, what are some practical steps that a board can what are some practical steps that a board can take to build in uh, reflective practice? We, we've heard the idea of a retreat. We've heard the idea of a self-assessing at the meeting. How did this meeting go? Um, what are some other things that a board might just build into its annual calendar, opportunities to reflect in and improve?
Didn't I hear one of the other, um, presenters talk about space and time? Um, dedicated, dedicated agenda, dedicated part of an agenda or something like that? Was that maybe, who, was that Erica?
Yeah, I did. I mentioned that as a policy governance, um, model, it's part of the monthly, um, agenda. Uh, every, at the end of each meeting, an opportunity to reflect on our behavior and how we, um, did we implement the policies? Um, did we address them per policy? Um.
So would you flesh that out a little bit? Was it like, how long did that take? And let's say you weren't a policy governance model and yet you still wanted to be reflective. Could you kind of reform that?
Absolutely. So in front of me, well, so first I must say, I've only been trained as a policy governance board member three different times with the Carver's, like, so I literally haven't experienced being a board member outside of policy governance. So I'll preface that.
Okay.
Um, I would say though, um, this is, I think, a best practice of, of any kind of meeting. Um, and it's, for example, I have in front of me the, one of the old, um, evaluations that I found in my drawer. Um, well, the question, we provided strategic leadership by focusing on ends. So we have our vision and mission. Did, did our work reflect that we were focused on our ends? We obtain or consider ownership input and that's community, right? Our, our stakeholders are our community. Did we consider and take in their, in their feedback during their public comment opportunity? We encourage diversity of viewpoints. So people on the board was, were all voices heard. Um, so whether you're a policy governance board or not, these are all questions that any board can ask them, ask themselves. Um, were we proactive and future-focused, right? That's a core value that we had. Um, we limited our decisions to items that were related to board's governance jobs. So making sure that we didn't step into the superintendent's role.
Yeah.
Doing, staying in our roles and responsibilities, so on and so forth. Um, and then after we each did that, uh, reflection independently.
Okay.
We would then share out, um, which areas did we rate ourselves always or most of the time? Which areas did we rate ourselves, you know, where we, we, so then we would have a conversation about our personal reflection as a board. Um, and then we would make commitments, right, for the next time.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
It sounds similar to the format we use, but we, we did the, the Google form as we, we would wrap our meeting by, um, we, we did sort of three takeaways from the meeting and it'd be a quick social media post. So the secretary or whomever, whoever was sort of charged with that, we would check in with the full board. What do we think the big takeaways are from this meeting? And it'd be the quickest little, um, like literally three bullet points with maybe links to the presentations that could then be posted. Um, and then that gave everybody a chance to say, okay, we agree that these were sort of the three biggest things that we talked about today. So the public then wouldn't have to read through all the minutes or, you know, if, to whatever the extent their interest was, they could click and click and click and get there, or they could, um, see a quick hit on our, on our, um, social media posts and, and then as we were wrapping the meeting, I would remind people to check their inbox for their, um, their boards, our self-evaluation form. So, um, so time-wise, that didn't take a considerable amount of time. And again, full participation was not what we would typically get from that, but literally we would begin next, every next agenda planning meeting, looking at the feedback we did get as a little leadership team as we were planning the next agenda. And then twice a year, we did that, we capture all of that theme it and share it back to the full board. So we would then, um, do a deeper conversation about things that we wanted to make sure we kept in mind for the coming, you know, six months. So timing wise, that didn't take a ton of time. It is a practice. So it really requires intentional effort.
Yeah.
We, I would highly recommend that every school board, at least annually, self-assesses, how are we doing as a board? Uh, we'll include in the follow-up materials with the email tomorrow, um, a sample, board self-assessment that can be done electronically. And, and I think it's, it's a valuable tool. It's not nearly as important what the questions are on the tool as it is the conversation about, you know, how we feel. Now, I've developed a few board self-assessments through the years and, you know, people will get hung up on, well, that should have been a two and this should be a three and that's, that, that's, that's not valuable. Um, the value is in the conversation of why I think it's a three or a two or a four. Um, however, the, the scale is organized. And, and it, it is really important that the board not just complete the assessment, but that they come back together and have a conversation, um, looking for what are our areas of celebration? What should we as a team maybe report at our next formal board meeting? The board recently did a board self-assessment. Again, we're modeling that reflective practice. Board recently assessed our work and we found that we're really good at our use of data, our time management, our working relationship with the superintendent. And we found these three areas for improvement that really could be goals for the board for the next six months or year. Um, these are the three things we need to work on. Maybe we need to get more community input. Or maybe we need to have a better understanding of how the budget's developed, in, in what, whatever it is that the board agrees. And then, uh, again, it's that because I, I'm sitting here thinking about, okay, the benefits of reflective practice, right? What, it, it's, it's the improvement, it's the change, i- it's the growth ultimately. Um, not just for us and our work, but for the school system and the students. Um, are they getting the support they need?
In the modeling.
Yes. Yeah, super important, right?
Yeah.
Last words, uh, any other suggestions? Erica, I'm looking at you at the moment. Um, any, any final suggestions for school board members listening to this?
I think, um, the reminder of you are a collective group, um, not necessarily, not an individual when you're on the board. And so that, re- reminding you of the, the, you can certainly do a self-reflection of how you um, were a part of the bigger group, but remembering that, um, you're not a, a board, a board in isolation. And so that collective, uh, reflective practice is so important.
Just express gratitude for the courage to think about our work in this way. And, um, the willingness to be vulnerable and learn and grow together as the, the very body that Erica's talking about.
I'd like to say that, and, um, something that has guided me for a long time is, and I think it, uh, it, it, it is important here is Bogatsky, who was a Russian educator, during Stalin, who was very futuristic, sort of came up with this thing, and I think it's this, is that people learn best, and I'm thinking of the board members as learners. People learn best when they succeed after struggling a little too hard. That's the, you know, J curve that people talk about, stuff like that. So I think that the idea that this should be, it, it isn't that we should make this kind of activity easy, nor should it be impossible. We grow most when we have to work a little and then succeed at it. And that's, that is something I've always tried to keep in mind, to keep people just on that edge of having to work a little hard and then coming out on the right side of it.
That's very good. I, I want to say thank you to each of you and, uh, also definitely want to say thank you to all of the school board members in the state of Vermont. Um, thank you for your service to your community and to the state, um, for the future of our schoolchildren. Uh, we hope you found this webinar valuable. You get a, a follow-up survey and you can give us some feedback for, uh, in the spirit of continuous improvement and reflective practice. Uh, let us know the opportunities for improve, we do, to improve. We do take that very seriously. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, future webinars. We've got, uh, planning for this next year, uh, of a series of very valuable webinars for school boards and individual members. And, uh, we trust everybody has a, a safe and enjoyable December.